Z-Files is doing our first interview from the new administration building here in Shalimar, back in the area behind the big commission chambers where the county commissioners have individual offices and they have a nice conference room here and there's a map on the wall behind us. And we're with Trey Goodwin. Trey, this will be our first interview since you ran for reelection, I believe.
I think you're right.
And that was four years ago.
That's right. Time goes quickly.
Yeah, you've enjoyed it. I think your name goes on about it again this August?
That's right. That's right. I'm up this August again for reelection to see if the good folks of Okaloosa County will have me back.
Okay. Well, I think that for people who have -- because we know our county has people moving here all the time. Some come here with the military and a whole lot tend to stay here once they've been here, we think, over the years. It looks like we've got a high percentage of retired military in this area. And how did you wind up in Okaloosa County? Is it a birthplace or you, like many of us, just liked it once we got here?
Well, I do like it. I liked it once I got here, but I got here from right at the beginning, as you pointed out. I was born here. I was born in Fort Walton. And, you know, I've got a kind of a split story on how my family got here. On my dad's side, it was a fairly typical scenario that you might hear. My grandfather, my dad's father, was in the Air Force and they got to Eglin. And he finished out his Air Force career at Eglin and liked it and the family stayed. So I guess they preferred here over Pennsylvania, where they'd come from. So that's how my dad got here. And he actually came here very young. He was only two when he got here, so he really doesn't remember anywhere else either, from what I can tell in sitting and talking with him. On my mom's side, my family got to Florida in the early 1800s in the area over to the north and east of the Funiac in the Leonia community. That's over in Holmes County. And then my great-grandparents made their way down to what was then Camp Walton back in the late 20s and early 30s and made that home. And so that's how my mom's side of the family got here. And so I feel like I've at least become a local with that heritage here.
Well, they've got connections all the way back to the beginning of early days of Okaloosa County there.
That's exactly right. Absolutely.
Because as we were just chatting before we did the stuff I was telling you about the -- what J.D. Peacock and I found in the old minutes books, the first two, and of course we have featured that on Z-Files. And we pretty well have an -- we know we know the day and the meeting that was the first one in the 1918 courthouse. And that was on December the 10th. And so this year, it may be August, September, depending on whether it happens between now and late summer, but the new courthouse is moving along.
It is. It is. It's coming along. Of course, our construction techniques have improved significantly since 1918. It's not going to be a wood frame building, but, you know, it's going to be a very good, efficient building, and I think it's going to last quite a long time.
Well, this first one was a kind of a yellow brick for whatever -- why they picked yellow, I don't know, because there were some buildings already in Crestview or about being built about then, because one of their first meeting places was in a building called the Rice Building, the first two-story brick building. And it sat on that piece of land which now has, with a park, a law firm, and other people are right across from the gazebo and where the courthouse property has been ever since. The courthouse property has always been -- the early developers gave a chunk of that land to the government for a government complex. But that goes way back in history.
Absolutely.
So then, you grew up, what'd you go to, high school, college? Give us that background.
Okay. I went to Choctaw, so I am a big green Indian. And then I went on to the University of Florida from there and got my undergraduate degree in building construction at the University of Florida. Came back here, worked for a short few months as a project manager on a condominium project, and then was accepted to law school, went to Florida State for law school, and got my doctorate degree there. So I feel like I've paid, you know, paid my dues at -- both are big state universities, but, you know, I often get asked the question, "So are you a Gator fan or a Knoll?" And I like them both, but my wife also graduated from Florida, so we wear orange and blue. It works out well that way.
Well, you can always tell them, "Well, really, you went to the two schools that had their birth in the Funiac Springs, actually." Back in the early days of the Chautauqua in the Funiac, there was a thing they used to call a norm, which was a nickname for colleges for men and women. And at some point, the women's school moved to Tallahassee and the men's school moved to Gainesville, and they became those other bigger schools.
Well, that's really interesting. And then, of course, now, you know, Florida State is a co-ed school, right? Interestingly, my grandfather kind of followed the opposite path of me. He, after the war, he went to Florida State College for Women as a student of the University of Florida, but the University of Florida at the time did not have the physical space to house all the men coming back from war that were going to school in the GI Bill. So he went there and fortunately met my grandmother. And then, when space opened up at Gainesville, both of them moved down to Gainesville and he finished up there at the University of Florida. So he spent some time at both as well.
So you've been in law practice and some construction work since you've been through college here in the Fort Walton Beach area?
That's right. That's right. My experience in the construction industry pre-law school was a short, little less than a year, but it was actually a really great experience because I got to see hands-on putting into, you know, into practice some of the things I learned in my undergraduate degree there at the University of Florida at the Rinker School of Construction. And after law school, I've actually found somewhat of a niche in dealing in construction-related matters from the perspective of an attorney. And I've got certain clients, I think, tend to like the fact that I could actually sit down and read a set of plans with them. So that background has been beneficial in that respect.
Well, as the biggest project you've got going right now is the new courthouse, but there's been other construction projects, changes to the wastewater treatment facility, the building of this complex down here that we have in Shalimar that replaced the old 1950s vintage looking, spread-out campus for all things. So as you look at those plans the architects bring you, do you kind of look at them real close at the details and the construction plans?
Well, I do, to the extent that I can use that information to help make good policy directions for the county. You know, I also tend to dive into the contract language some, and maybe that's good, maybe that's bad, depends on who you ask and who I've made comments to, but...
Sometimes you don't want to know how the sausage is being made.
Exactly. Exactly. But I think it's good to have a watchful eye on those things. And it's real easy as a project owner, which the county is a project owner for very many projects, to not be able to digest all the details of those things. So to the extent that I can add any benefit there, I certainly want to try to do that, and I do. I don't claim to be an expert on those things or all things, but, you know, to the extent I can help issue spot, that's what I try to do.
Well, this project here at Shalimar, which consolidated offices that the county was able to lease space for, in the long haul, turns out financially to be better off, from what I understand.
It does. I mean, this building had a high price tag when you just say the number and round it, it's $12 million, but you've got to think about that, it's 80,000 square feet, and it canceled quite a few Class A office space leases. In other words, just like you pointed out, gave us the ability to get out of the rental business and have ownership in a consolidated place. The other thing that has been so unique about this building is that for so many government services at the county level, it's provided one front door for people to go to. And so that's interesting. Of course, you know, it's no longer a courthouse, but you might find this interesting. I still have people that set up appointments to meet with me and I say, "Yes, you know, my office is there at the building on Eglin Parkway and Shalimar." And they'll say, "Oh, the new courthouse." But we have no court facilities here.
It was. For many years, there was, of course. Now, the South County facilities are that big building up on the fairgrounds, which serves very well down here. And again, as we mentioned, here, late summertime, you'll be taking occupancy of the new courthouse, the official main courthouse, if you call it, in the county seat in Crestview.
That's right. And, you know, that will be the main courthouse. In fact, it'll be the only courthouse. I joke sometimes and point out that we might be one of the most unique counties, at least for this interim period of time while we're building the Crestview courthouse. Okaloosa County has no courthouse. Okaloosa County has no courthouse annex. The very best thing we have in Okaloosa County is a courthouse annex extension.
Yeah. Somebody in legal mind figured out how to call it correctly, that.
That's right.
And then you have this Minister Nellin Crestview. Thank you, Pat Hollering. I always like to say, because I realize when she was supervisor of elections, she dealt with the president of that bank to get a lease initially and then a purchase of what is now the Bracken Building, named for one of the former county clerks. And of course, her office is, which Paul Lux has now, is very good for elections, and they've got some very nice big vaults in there to keep all those important records in.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I mean, thank goodness that we've got that physical space there and it's served us well. And I'll also have to say that, you know, the Board of County Commissioners chambers were in the courthouse that was demolished in Crestview, and the new chambers will be in the courthouse now. I do have to say that I am extremely appreciative to the city of Crestview because they allow us to hold our meetings during this interim time in their council chambers, and so they've been extremely good hosts in allowing us to do that. And so I, for one, am very appreciative.
It's convenient, but it's good. And of course, the new commission chambers will be almost geographically near the area where the original ones were for all those many years, the lower left corner, as you come into the front entrance. And the big tree out back that some of us, they call those tree hunters, got saved and it's a -- because it was, it's in the photographs of that area when the original courthouse was. It was a little tree back then, but it's a big tree now. But the whole grounds are going to -- I've seen in the drawings, going to be pretty nice looking.
I believe so. I think the aesthetics on the building are going to be nice and complement the historic characteristics that we want to preserve while at the same time giving us the modern efficiencies of a new building. So I think there's going to be a great blend there between new and old in a way that's very tasteful. And I think that the folks in Crestview will be very proud of the building. I think the folks in Okaloosa County will be very proud of the building, although unless you're -- I do, I'll have to say this, I joke, you know, sometimes talking to folks, they say, "Well, we're really excited about the new building, but I sure hope I never have to go there."
Well, you'll have to do some business. And the way it's laid out and that, because I've done Z-Files showing the floor plans and the way it's going to handle the public on the first floor with all those critical places you go for clerks, paperwork and things. And the security, both in the handling of inmates and in the facilities for the judges and the courtrooms, has all been thought of and well-planned. As they said, I doubt that's going to be possible, someone ever get a pop shot at a judge, but they're outside that building, the way the hallway around their offices is and the way all of the daisies are arranged. And of course, they're secure entrances and no longer will inmates be sitting in the one corner of the seats in the courtroom. They'll come in when they're needed for their part of being in the situation.
That's right. So, and that's a great point. The security of the facility is of paramount importance and, you know, it, I believe, is going to enhance the security for our judicial staff, our judges, their assistants. And not only that, also for the public users. It, you know, a lot of times, you know, we think about, you know, who the security measures as in place for the folks that work there, but this court facility will also provide that level of security and comfort for the folks who have to come in as a citizen and seek assistance from the judiciary. In other words, you know, domestic violence victims, things of that nature. I think that they will be much better protected in this facility than they were before, not because of our staff or personnel, because I can tell you that the security personnel that we have in our court facilities in Okaloosa County are top-notch, but to have the physical layout of a facility that makes their job so much more efficient, I think, will really enhance our overall security.
So, but knowing, I'm hearing you saying all these positive things about the courthouse, I believe you were the no vote on the decision to build that courthouse?
Yeah, and I...
I want you to explain that to the people.
Sure.
But why would you vote against a new courthouse?
There were a couple of things that I was upset with about the process. I was not upset with having the new courthouse. Frankly, you know, the facility we had either needed millions and millions of dollars of rehabilitation or to be replaced, and in this scenario, it looked like that replacement was more cost-efficient for the dollars spent than rehabilitation. That analysis was run. I was upset with the process, and I'll be candid, this process started before my time for a couple of things. And I'll just lay it out there. One of the things that I did not like was that we used a particular design-build process that was laid out such that the county had to pay for a multimillion-dollar design without knowing what that would cost to build. And then the county was required to get a price from the design builder to build, and if the county did not like that price, the county was free to reject the price. However, the county was not free to keep the million-dollar plans that the county paid for. That upset me greatly because I felt like it put us in a disadvantage. I don't fault the contractor for that. If I were wearing that hat, I'd negotiate the best deal I could for my company, and I don't fault them for that. I just feel like we put ourselves at a disadvantage. Now, frankly, we have, you know, we've been able to cost engineer or engineer some things to try to save some costs on the building, and that's worked. But we've also seen a few overruns, too, and that bothered me. And I'll tell you the other thing I didn't like, and one of the reasons, there was that no vote that I had, and it came because the way that the courthouse came in on budget was to delete the finishing out of necessary courtroom space. The explanation was, "We will just add it in later." And to me, that put us at a huge risk to enter a contract, knowing that we must have those facilities and knowing that we will only get a price on those facilities at some time in the future when we'll only have one source to go to. Again, it was the process that I was upset with and concerned about. I wasn't against the courthouse and I wasn't against the contractor or anything like that. It was the process used and the way it developed, I thought, could be done differently and for a better value for our citizens. And that's where I was coming from.
Well, you're looking at it from your perspective as a lawyer with a construction background.
Fair enough.
And ironically, we have one other commissioner who has that, Nathan Boiles, has both an engineering/construction background before him become a lawyer. And the other ones, what we said we got, other people with other backgrounds, which are all, makes the cross-section of the border county commissioners, where it was.
Yeah, no, you're exactly right. I mean, you know, I guess we've been referred to as those two you-know-what lawyers up there.
But anyway, we should be moving to that one now. On the other hand, I do believe that the building built up on the fairgrounds, at least I remember when we turned it when it opened, there was still some areas that at that point were being held to be finished out later when the judicial needs were needed. So I don't know if that got done just to accommodate, because now all of the trials are held and have been now for the last couple of years, have been all done down here, and just about all of them have to be done down here in the courthouse up by the fairgrounds.
Well, that's right. The only other facility that we're using for any judicial purpose is the water and sewer building, you know, affectionately known as the Taj Mahal, that's there down the street from the South County courthouse. And there are some hearings that are being held there. Our magistrate has held some various docket items down there as well. But, you know, between utilizing those two spaces, we've had to kind of cram everything in and I, you know, fortunately, we've been able to make do, but it's been, I think it's been a strain on the judicial side, it's been a strain on, you know, facility side, and fortunately, there's an end in sight.
Yeah, we're not far away from that part. One of the big things in progress that the county has got to deal with, our roads and traffic closes, has got to be still a major concern. We've got this wonderful thing called a military base, lots of people got to go home every day and back to work, and we've got all these tourists that come here and are also utilizing our roads. And all you get out of them is what they paying gas tax or bed tax, basically, or whatever they buy and sell, it's been tough off.
Well, that's a good point, you know, and our traffic infrastructure is a huge problem. And as you know, this Board of County Commissioners has, I think, recognized the nightmare in North Okaloosa County. Some people argue that Crestview's mid-Okaloosa County, depending on who you talk to.
Almost, actually, the midpoint, you draw a diagonal line from the four corners, is not too far from where the Seventh Special Forces Complex is, right about in that point, at that middle, so I guess, the hub city. Because with that, that was once the national forest until World War II and President Roosevelt gave it to the Department of Defense, the old Choctaw-Hatchee National Forest. But then everything is pretty well north of the river and where Crestview has grown. And where it was once the number-one city in population, it's back up there now and probably going to stay up there, it looks like.
Oh, yeah. Clearly, Crestview's the place where the growth potential exists, and we're seeing that. And I feel that we will see, through collaborative efforts with the county, the cities, with organizations like the Economic Development Council, I think that we will see more industry, both DoD-related, non-DoD-related, coming in. And the obvious place for those things are going to be in the north end of the county, anything north of the Shoal River, and I think Crestview will continue to grow. I think areas outside of Crestview will continue to grow. I mean, as you know, Cal, there's subdivisions in Baker now, you know? And when I grew up, that didn't happen.
And Auburn and Airport Road, yes.
Right.
D.R. Horton's building big complexes out off of Airport Road before it gets to Poverty Creek Road.
That's right. That's right. So all that means is that the traffic burden we see now can only get worse. And so I've been committed, along with the balance of the commissioners, to dealing with, at least at this point, focusing on a Western bypass for Crestview. That is a huge ticket item, but it is desperately needed, and we remain, I think, as a group, as a whole commission, committed to that. The other problem that we have is that the south end of the county is congested, too. You pointed out the tourists. We've had record number tourists over the past few years, and we continue to see good growth. That's because I think Okaloosa County is such a special place, and we've got the best beaches, in my opinion, probably in the world, at least in the southeast, but I think it's more expansive than that, and people that find out about that are excited to get down here and enjoy that, too. But with that comes an extensive burden on our infrastructure, our public safety, and utilities, and government services. And with regard to transportation needs, one of the biggest complaints that I get is that in Destin, Okaloosa Island, even going through Fort Walton Beach, Highway 98 has become a de facto parking lot. Part of the reason is that there is nowhere for the cars to go that are on their way to see those beautiful beaches, there's nowhere to park in our peak seasons. I mean, you know, you drive down Highway 98 across Okaloosa Island, you can see people parked on the side of the road in a ditch, you see people stuck in the sand because they didn't realize you shouldn't park in the sand. You get to Destin, you see people trying to turn in at the harbor walk area, people trying to find parking. It's just, there's not enough. One of the things that I have been looking into and working with, and I'm trying to work through with our tourist development department, is figure out, how can we get additional public parking in those tourist-heavy areas to get tourists off the road and out of the way of travel lanes? And we've actually identified some opportunities there that we might be able to put in some public parking. It may end up having to be multi-story parking garage-type parking that would be open and serve not only a place to get tourists off the highway, but also a place that our locals could park as well. Because, you know, I talked to a lot of folks, and a lot of people enjoy those beautiful beaches, assets, the entertainment in the harbor walk area as well, but that, but a big complaint even from our locals is, if we go down there, we're not sure we can find a place to park. So, you know, one simple solution that I think could work, and I think could be embraced by our tourism industry and our locals, would be to get those parking facilities built and let the tourists pay for it.
We're going to take a... We're on part two of our Z-Files for this Saturday morning. We're in the offices and actually in a conference room here at the administration building here in Shalimar. I'm going to scoot just a little bit over this way here so I stay on camera. And we're visiting with County Commissioner Trey Goodwin, who is in his final year of his first term in office. Let's talk, we're going to talk about that Highway 98 some more, but I'm going to go back to the question of what you did politics-wise before you became a county commissioner, and when did you decide you wanted to be involved in the political side of what's going on in the county?
Well, that's a great question. So before I decided to run for county commission, I actually served at the city level, at the city of Fort Walton Beach as a council member, for three years. My term started back in 2011 there, and that was actually a really good experience. And so I guess my desire to run for office, to become a part of a legislative body at the local government level, started back then. It was really my motivation to run for the city seat back at that time. And I can tell you that one of the reasons that I wanted to run was that I interacted with local governments in my capacity as an attorney, representing people who either had issues with local governments and needed assistance, or were trying to do things with their own private property, and were trying to navigate what local governments were doing and what, you know, what kind of rules and regulations some might call red tape stood in their way. And so I wanted to be part of that legislative process for the purposes of trying to make local government work better for our citizens. You know, I didn't run for office because I had some grandiose idea that I was the, you know, the savior of all things local government-related, or that I could, you know, build a particular building or do a thing like that. My, you know, candidly, my real motivation was, you know, I'd seen where sometimes local governments go a little too far. I wanted to be the guy that said, "Hey, well, wait a minute, let's think. Should we, if this isn't regulated, should we regulate it, or might we leave it alone? Or if we are regulating it, are we regulating it too much, and should we look at whether or not government should be that invasive?" And so I'm not just a no vote guy, I'm a wait a minute guy. Let's see, should government be going down that path? And that's really why I started out. Now, of course, in office, you find out that it's pretty complex. There's a lot of things you're obligated to do as a local government. Some of the things are not even your choice as a local government.
State rules, state laws, federal laws, all get in the way.
That's exactly right. That's exactly right. There are things that you're required to do, you're required to see about, attend to, and fund that you have no choice. And so trying to balance that against what I consider my philosophical purposes in running is, has been an interesting challenge and one that, you know, I still work on that today. How do you balance these obligations against a theme of smaller government where government could be smaller?
Do you interface with our legislators, senators and state representatives and our federal congressmen from this area?
I do. I do. In fact, you know, I regularly talk to our state and federal officials about things that are affecting Okaloosa County, anything from, you know, funding requests when we're looking at major projects that we need assistance from the state for, or from the state with, for local projects, to legislative policy matters that are ultimately going to affect what local government does. You know, currently, there are several bills going, you know, that were up for consideration, and I interacted directly with our representative about, you know, my thoughts from the perspective of sitting in the seat of the county commissioner, of how those proposed legislation would affect our citizens.
Of course, in some of the legislation that this 2018 session is dealing with, and I don't know where it's going to go, is some legislators from some parts of our state want to either severely restrict or eventually eliminate what we call CRAs in Florida, Community Redevelopment Agencies. I have done some visits with some cities kind of near where the new Atlanta Braves Stadium is when I'm up that way, Kennesaw and Woodstock, where their hotel taxes can be used for economic development. And in one town, their total revenue that runs their economic development department is their bed tax on the four hotels, and their little interchange on 575 going off of 75 north of Atlanta. Now, in Florida, we have these tourist development things with, created by the legislature, but the powerhouses, I guess, with all the big central Florida tourism industry, kind of want to keep that where they restrict what could be some very good uses of the millions of dollars sitting in the bank here in Okaloosa County for our TDC.
Well, that's true, and that's a challenge we face. So we are a bed tax collector county and have been for, you know, what, over 20 years? You know, and of course, that was first passed by referendum, embraced by the citizens, and as I understand the history on it, you know, it kind of went through a couple of challenges before the folks in Okaloosa County finally embraced the idea. And there have been a lot of local good from having that tax. And, you know, and I guess I'll start... And, you know, and I guess I'll start out by pointing out the good and then talking about the challenges. You know, the good is, we've been able to enhance and develop local facilities like beach accesses, and even boat ramps in parks that are on the inland waterways that have been used to enhance. And I can tell you that those facilities are used probably 95% by local citizens and not by tourists, but we've still been able to utilize those tourist dollars to bring those facilities into a better state or to create new facilities. So those are some good things that we've done. Obviously, the challenge is, when you bring more people here, in the numbers that we do in Okaloosa County, you have a significant burden on your infrastructure. We talked about that earlier in our last segment. You also have that significant burden on our public safety, our sheriff's office, our local cities and their police departments, fire departments, our EMS and emergency services. All those departments see an enhanced burden. And, you know, I've sat and I've talked with our sheriff about the numbers and the quantitative data to show how his office has been affected by an increase in tourists. And their calls for service are just really through the roof during our peak times, and it is significantly tourist-based. You know, we've fortunately been able to get some relief with, you know, a 10% allowance of bed tax use towards public safety. It's limited, it's reimbursement-based, and it is, it's been helpful. It has not relieved, dollar-for-dollar, the burden that's put on our folks. Now, you have to counter that against the industry that I think largely believes that most of the money should be used for advertising. And I think that there's at least some logic there in that if the tourists were to go away, there would be an economic outfall for all of us in the area. So, the tourists are a good thing, even though they bring some challenges with the additional burdens they place. Balancing that against, how much money do we use to make sure they come back? Or how much money do we use to maybe advertise to a different tourist base? If there's a thought that we want to change the profile of our typical Okaloosa County tourist versus how much of that do we put into operations, i.e. public safety or infrastructure, be it roads, parking, or otherwise? And so that's a huge challenge. And the legislature does have, you know, a lot of control on that. Because, again, all tax authority comes from the state. The county doesn't create tax authority. We only tax what the state says we can tax. And so those monies can only be used the way the state says we can use those monies. And so while we can use some of it for public safety and some infrastructure, you know, there's a thought out there that that number's probably not quite enough, that that percentage ought to be a little bit higher than the 10%. I am not an advocate of going to the extent of gutting the advertising budget, because then it would have the negative effect, right? All the dollars would dry up if we don't promote our area as we want it promoted.
And then, of course, your ad valorem tax base is greatly improved, because just about everything that's down there on the beach areas, both the island and through Destin, are all, they're not homesteaded properties. They're almost all rental property. There are some nice homes, yes, but a big chunk of that is paying a full tax as if it's a commercial business, a commercial building.
Well, that's correct. And you think, it's not only are they non-homestead properties, but they exist because of the tourists, right? I mean, we don't have that many condominiums because, you know, because we lack tourists. They're there because we have a demand. And not only that, the more tourists you bring in, the more tourists that we target to a particular profile, the more value that we add to the intrinsic value of our real property. All that means, it bumps up the tax base. And hey, if somebody from another state wants to own a condominium in Destin or Okaloosa Island and pay thousands of dollars of real property taxes to the general fund of Okaloosa County, all the better for those folks that live here and work here and make this our home.
And, of course, we are getting a lot of tourism because of all the expansion, the great stuff that Tracy Stage and Mike Stinson and their staff have done at the airport, and with all these more flights from Allegiant and other airlines, that's bringing up people that way, which fortunately, they're not dealing too much with the traffic. Now, you have to deal with the Uber question that you had at the commission meeting this week, and that's something they didn't even think about when the tourism business started in our world. But still, we know that from the national statistics, that close to 90% of the people drive to their destinations, and 10% really fly. But, boy, it's nice to have them flying here, too.
Oh, yeah. No, you're exactly right. I mean, the growth that we've seen in our airport department under our current administrative leadership out there with Tracy Stage and his team has been tremendous. It's, you know, he's found the formula, I think, that works for Okaloosa County, and that is, we must protect our, the Eglin Mission, and we must be a good tenant of our Eglin landlord. But with that in mind, if we can figure out how to do those things, and at the same time, build relationships with airlines, build relationships with airlines that put destinations in place for primarily direct flights, were possible, that service, bringing folks here, and also have the benefit of serving our folks in providing flights to places where our citizens want to go. And so, you know, there's been some strategic partnerships with several airlines. I think Allegiant is one that's been no secret, that has really developed out there with the airport. I've had absolutely great feedback from folks. The direct flights that have been offered are well-embraced. They're bringing people here, they're taking our citizens to other places, you know, because when you live here, you vacation elsewhere, right? And so it's been good from that perspective. And, but, you're right, that does bring more people here. Now, frankly, the more we bring here on an airplane and the less that drive here, the better, perhaps. Although what I understand is, looking at the rental car numbers, that those are just through the roof.
Yeah.
And so we still have a lot of people that fly here, but they still end up driving because they rent a car.
And so they're out there on Highway 98, kinda go somewhere.
That's right.
In that parking lot. Which, well, I wanna go back then to the 98 bypass that was talked about for a while, was a bypass that would pick up somewhere over at Highway 87 or in that area, in the Milton, over really south of Milton, north of Navarre area, and come all the way across north of Hurlebut, and cross, now cross 85 at Niceville, where there is part of a bypass going down to the bridge, and then continue all the way to 331. Now, as we first talked about it, yes, that would help people going across that part from being caught in the traffic on 98. But I could also see the tourists that's coming here from Louisiana and Texas, getting off on a four-lane 87 and going down that far to come over along the coast, rather than taking I-10 and getting on 85 at Crestview. So that could take some of that traffic away. And I think maybe even for the people coming from Dulton, and I used to be, and my first trip to Destin was in the late '50s, when I was working at a TV station in Albany, Georgia. And some guys said, let's go down fishing in Destin. It was a long ride, down through Dulton, down to 98, and then coming on the east side off of 98 to get into Destin. And there wasn't a whole lot there at the beaches in 1959. But it was a good fishing, though, good fishing. But do you hear anything, TPO, planning agency, is there any even discussion of that other bypass that was kinda talked about, was, it looked like even the military were gonna approve it? Except, there might be certain days we couldn't go behind north of Hurlebut because of the burning situation that has to happen once a year in that area.
Right. No, so, from, I don't think that discussion on the bypass has ever gone away completely, because it is desperately needed. I mean, with the water features that we have here, particularly the inland water features, you know, along the beach, there's only so many places to route traffic. There's only so many alternatives you can have. I mean, there's pinch points, right? The connection at the Marler Bridge at Destin, there at the Brooks Bridge in Fort Walton, that all funnels traffic down to a narrow point. And so without some sort of an alternative route, there's just only so much you can do. So I don't think that discussion's ever gone away. It obviously ran into some challenges, environmental challenges particularly. You know, that's sort of back to the, how much does government over-regulate? And kinda the reason I wanted to kinda get in the business of being involved in the first place. But beyond that, I think that, yes, you know, there's been, we've seen with the connector road, with Mid Bay Bridge, that the Department of Defense, Eglin Air Force Base, is willing to partner with us when we can come up with plans that do not threaten their mission. And I think that, at least from Okaloosa County's perspective, that, you know, mission protection is always a top priority, and will be in the foreseeable future, as far as I know. But when we can, when we can think in ways and plan in ways that don't create mission concern issues, I think that Eglin has proven to be a very good partner. And I can tell you that Hurlebut's a good partner, as well, with the land that they are custodians of. They've been very good partners, working with us on various projects, even stormwater projects, things like that. So I think the bypass is not a dead deal, but is, as far as I am aware, there's no imminent project coming. So anything that we might see there would probably be a long-term plan.
Maybe when you're a grandpa.
Hopefully, not that long, but perhaps.
The way it goes in getting roads done.
That's right.
We have to deal with that. Okay, as we look to this now, what things do you see that are needed in the future? Projects you wanna keep on or work on as a county commissioner that's out there? If you had, as you say, that magic wand, and you could wave it out there and make something happen, what are a couple of those things you think are really important to Okaloosa County?
Well, we kinda talked about it earlier, and one of the things that I wanna see done, that I think can get done in my next term, is the construction of the parking facilities on the 98 corridor. I think we can get that done, and I think we can make the tourists pay for it. That's a big one. Some of the other things that I really wanna see us work on, in my district in particular, which is District 4, which is western Fort Walton Beach, Mariester, you know, the Hurlebut area, if you will, that's my district. It's very low, and we have significant stormwater issues there. That's not the most exciting stuff, unless you're a person that's had your house or driveway flooded. Then it's pretty important. But what I've found is, in my district, is that it's not as isolated of an issue as you might think. It's large chunks of neighborhoods at a time that are getting affected by that. And it may be because we're in a rainier cycle over the past few years, but for whatever reason, it's a combination of things, I really think, between aged-out infrastructure and not. I wanna look for ways to try to strategically address that, so that we can have less of this threat to private property where possible. And, you know, the key there is finding ways to dedicate resources. And we do it now, we do it on a very small scale compared to the need. My hope is, is that we can utilize some more grants that we have actually been able to utilize in the past couple of years, to accomplish more of those projects.
There are some interesting grant applications. I've been attending the Triumph Board meetings. I think as of the last meeting, there's 116 applications totaling a billion, 500 million. And they're only gonna get one and a half billion over the period of time. They've only got 300 million in the bank, so they're quickly gonna have to cull those down. And the impression, from what several of those board members were saying at the last meeting, they're gonna be looking at who's also got some money in the deal, too. Who's got some skin in the game, that they're not being asked to pay the whole thing. And they are never gonna pay the whole thing on a project, it sounds like, from hearing two or three of them talk. But Okaloosa County does have some pretty good applications in, some which affect transportation. There's a neat one that would create a very neat bicycle and walking path all the way from the bridge at Fort Walton, all the way to the bridge in Destin. And it's on the Air Force side, and apparently, they've got that agreement. And they're gonna have to remember, there's a whole bunch of protection, put in the ground down there a couple, about a decade ago. But then they can work around that, and that would be neat. You'd have a bicycle, walk along, and parts of it, you're right there next to the water in that real project the other day. There's a mental health application, which would deal with the problem you have, even in the inmate population, where it's, one, the need, and, two, the cost-effectiveness versus having to build more jail cells.
Yeah, no, that's a good point. And obviously, we're still in the infancy of the Triumph Gulf Coast application process, and we can, we do our best to glean from the committee's comments as to what kinda things they're gonna accept and what they're not. And so, you know, Okaloosa County's at least taken a first stab at different kinds of projects, some of which, as you pointed, are infrastructure, some are various things like the mental health facilities. So what we don't know is where the line's gonna be drawn on the proven economic development component, because I understand that's gonna be part of the scoring, where that's gonna be drawn on to the extent that part of the request includes operational costs versus construction, and where that will be drawn as far as how much, I think as you put, skin in the game, or how much of a contribution is the requesting entity going to be making. And I think that's become crystal clear, that there will be some component of match. It's not gonna be a freebie subsidy. There's gotta be something from the request, or be it county or not, that would have to be involved. And what I foresee, and this is educated speculation, perhaps, is that I think requests that have components of operational costs in them are probably gonna have a bigger challenge of getting through, just because, you know, the idea being that these will be lump-sum grants to get things started, but not to fund ongoing operational costs, because that's gonna have to come from the entity that's requesting, be it a government or be it a private entity. You know, and one other myth, I think, that we ought to, I'd like to point out, is that somehow that there's a certain percentage of the money that the counties are gonna get. My understanding, talking through with staff and council about that, is that there may be, that while there is an earmark of money that should be for local government counties, that does not mean just a check to go to the general fund. So that money could sit in perpetuity, unfunded, if the county doesn't come forward with projects that meet the criteria. So I think that's important, because there was some misconception that I've heard from citizens about, well, you know, aren't you gonna get a check for a percentage? Unfortunately, it won't be that easy.
No, no, there's a certain, each kinda gets an equal share of the first part. But then again, other entities, the colleges that submitted applications, other entities other than the governments can also submit. Well, Trey, we've enjoyed our time together, my gosh. Got a lot to be working on here in the next few years, it sounds like.
We do. We got a lot of work to do. I feel like we've made good progress on some things over the past three years. But, you know, it's a never-ending process, and I'm ready for the challenge, and I think that the commission as a whole is, and so I look forward to it.
And that's our Z-Files on the road, from here in the Shalimar Administrative Buildings, and here in the section where the county commissioners have offices down here for the south end of the county. And of course, there's also county commissioner, administrative staff, and offices in the Bracken Building, the old First National Bank Building in Crestview. And it won't be long, we'll be bringing you some Z-Files programs from inside that new courthouse, as it's gonna have, the lights are turned on, and there'll be some rooms we can get into and do some more visits there. That's the Z-Files for now, and that's it for this Saturday. We'll see you another time.